At the meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So everyone knows, in case of emergency, exits are in the back of the building on the sides. If anything should come up that requires an emergency exit, we'll let you know. Also, if you could please silence your cellphones during the meeting, it would be appreciated. Thank you. First on our agenda is the Board of Education Meeting minutes of September 26th. If I get a motion to approve. Anyone? Xavier and Barry, all in favor? That is everyone. There's also an FYI on a budget appropriation report for September 30th, an FYI on budget transfers, as well as revenue status report. There is the Treasurer's Report of August 2, 2017. If I can get a motion to approve, please.
Motion.
Jen and a second.
I'll second it.
That is Emily. All in favor? That is everyone. There's also warrants certified on 9/27/11 and 10/11/17 that I need a motion to approve. Jen and Bill, all in favor? And that is everyone. Moving on to board member communications announcements. Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring up?
I'll start. Tomorrow, the boys soccer are playing Copec at home. Boys soccer could be the league champions tomorrow if they win. They're 11-2-2 right now. They're having a fantastic year. They weren't even ranked at one point. Another note. Last time we were here, I made a big deal about goal number nine, and it just so happens that the Regional Advisory Council headed by the Eastern Suffolk Bosys, tasked with looking at ways to increase the diversity of the pre-service teaching candidate pool across the state, has tapped our very own Superintendent, Mr. Polanski. Congratulations to Mr. Polanski. It really goes to show that we've got the ship headed in the right direction.
There was a T at the end of that word, not a T.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Yeah, you know what? I'll give a shout out to the marching band who has been just killing it at every single competition, coming in first, scoring higher each week. And in fact, I think they're scoring their highest in their division in the whole state. So it's boding really well for them. They will be in Syracuse the last weekend of October, and we wish them the best of luck. We love our marching band, so go band!
While they're figuring that out, I have a shameless promotion for a team that does not have a super-winning record, but is playing like crazy. I'm just gonna throw a date out. The 24th is the last home game for the varsity volleyball team, the women's varsity volleyball team. They are in a tough, tough league, but this program a few years ago was virtually nonexistent. There was barely any players, and these girls have been working really, really hard. And they lose, but they lose by like one point. Well, it has to be two points because of volleyball, but you know what I mean. But I'm just saying, these girls are playing their hearts out. You gotta come watch. If you've never watched a women's volleyball game, I am not kidding. Exciting and fun, and so they have their last home game of the season on the 24th. It's also Senior Day, so there's a couple seniors that are moving on, but there's some amazing younger players. So this program is really developing, and if you have a younger player who might be interested, it's just worth coming out and watching and giving them some support. I know they'd really appreciate it, so.
Well, we're talking about sports. I'll give a shout out to the girls varsity. Yes, we do have tennis, girls varsity tennis team. They are headed to playoffs that they just made by the seat of their pants, that they'll be starting on Thursday. But they're a young team because they lost a lot of seniors last year. There's no seniors on the team, so we're really proud of them for making the playoffs. So they'll be going off on Thursday. We wish them luck.
This week, Thursday night is the Booster Club Dinner. If you haven't gotten your tickets, I believe you still can get tickets online. HuntingtonBoosterClub.com? Dot org?
Dot org.
So that is one event. There's another event that is coming up as well, which is on November 7th. The high school and Finley PTSAs will be having their fundraiser at Hanu. Tickets are $65, and you can leave checks with the PTA mailboxes in the school. And if you'd like to bring me a birthday present, that might be made as well. And that's all I had to add.
BoosterClub is dot com.
Tom, did you say that that date was November 7th?
Yes.
It's election day?
Yes. Is that everyone? Mr. Superintendent, your turn.
A few things. The first month and a half, maybe two months of the school year, we can actually take a break from budget talks, but at this point, we actually start to consider what the 2018-19 budget process is going to bring us. And I will just throw out there at this point that we just received information about the Consumer Price Index as of September, and it's really average annual change in that index over the calendar year that determines the start point for the property tax cap calculation. And it looks like at this point, we're probably going to be at or very close to that 2% start point, which hasn't happened in a couple of years, which is obviously as good a collection of news that we're gonna have at this point. We're also looking at a slight decline in the employee retirement system costs, and the TRS numbers will come in shortly. Obviously, those are big numbers, as is the health insurance costs, but we'll be watching the trends very carefully, and obviously, all of this will factor into our budget development process. One thing I saw today, which I thought was absolutely incredible. I was over at Finley for a couple of reasons, and I walked into the beginning of their college awareness week. And I have to say that Mrs. Klein, Mrs. Burgos, and Mrs. Logan are doing a great job over there in terms of not only focusing on what goes on in the social lives of middle school kids, but also helping to instill an awareness of the college process. The kids were running around with the college banners and talking about why it's important for them to consider college and what they're looking forward to. It just was a relatively deep conversation amongst so many middle school students, and this is really what we want to hear from them, just to start to think about what life is gonna be like beyond their days in Huntington. So great job to the guidance counselors. And I'd also like to mention that this Saturday, and it's a busy week at the high school for a number of reasons regarding Homecoming Spirit Week, but I would really love to see this Saturday being the greatest homecoming celebration that Huntington has ever experienced. We have a parade stepping off from the Gerard Street Post Office at 11:30, followed by a 1:30 home contest. Huntington Blue Devils host Riverhead. They are currently 4-2. They're having a great season. Somewhat of a young team, but they're really taking it, leaving it all on the field. I'd love to see everybody out there and as much participation in the parade as possible. The following week, we start with a couple of open houses for those that are parents of third and fourth graders who will have a chance to select a school for next year. The Jack Abrams Open House is on the 25th, and Woodhull Open House is on November 1st, and Huntington High School Open House, which we've been holding for the past several years for realtors and parents. That'll be held on November 2nd. Notification will go out via the Connect Ed Auto Call system, as well as flyers from the buildings themselves. Also to mention, we have partnered with some in the community to help collect for those in need in Puerto Rico. And I know that there's other collection efforts out there by various clubs at the secondary level for both the victims of Maria and Harvey, but they are actually emptying. I know those Puerto Rico boxes have been emptied very, very routinely. We're really trying to do the best we can to get them what they need. There is a list attached to each box in every building in the district, so please don't hesitate to drop off anything that you possibly can, and we'll do the best we can to help facilitate it moving in the right direction. Thank you in advance for that. I would like to acknowledge October is National Principals Month, and I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge, I should acknowledge it routinely. We have eight outstanding principals in this district, and I'd like to acknowledge what they do on a daily basis. I know they're not all here tonight for various reasons, but I think it goes without saying that we could not be where we are as a district without the efforts of each and every one of them. And I would be also remiss, at our last meeting, we honored a large number of tenure recipients. We did it a little bit differently. This year, we had our tenure recommendations reaching the board over the summer, and we had the reception. They actually earned their tenure on the first day of school, and we recognized them formally on the September 26th date. It was a very nice celebration. But unfortunately, what we did is we missed somebody who actually earned tenure mid-year, and not to minimize the efforts and the contributions that this individual has made. She is a teaching assistant who has primarily been stationed at Woodhull for the past several years. She does an absolutely terrific job. She is also integrally involved in our adult education program. This is the kind of person, when you ask Regina if something can be done, she doesn't even nod. She just goes and does it. She makes a lot of things run and run seamlessly here. I want to formally apologize for not mentioning her at the last meeting, and I know she's here. I'd like to formally recognize and make sure that everybody gives her a round of applause. Regina Askerberg, thank you very much. You are absolutely terrific, and please keep up the great work and stay with us for a long, long time. Thank you, Regina.
That takes us to our first public commentary of the evening. Just to go over the ground rules for public commentary. Public commentary is limited to three minutes per speaker for a total time of 30 minutes. Commentary during this portion of the meeting shall be related to items slated for discussion and action on the agenda. Only if there is time remaining within the 30-minute period will we follow with comments that are outside of the discussion and action items. If time permits, there'll be an opportunity at the end of each board meeting for an additional public commentary on items that are not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the board must state their name, address, and identify any organization they may be representing at the meeting. We also ask that you please sign the sheet situated at the lectern in advance, including your name, address, phone number, and email address, and the nature of your comment. Only district residents and staff members shall be permitted to address the board except for persons who have been invited by the district. Persons who wish to address the board shall line up at the microphone used for this purpose and shall be permitted to address the board in that order. Comments to the board could be limited to by the board president and should relate to school matters. Employees should not be identified by name during public commentary. Comments relating to competence or personal conduct of individuals are prohibited and shall be declared out of order. Comments and questions from the public need not be responded to at the meeting. At his or her discretion, the board president, his in this case, may answer questions or respond to comments or refer them to the superintendent or other board members. And that opens our public commentary. Okay, then. That was a lot of work. James, James.
I know. We missed you, James. Where have you been?
I feel I have to reintroduce myself. My name is James Graber. I am a resident in the school district, teacher of the high school, and president of the Associated Teachers of Huntington. The first thing I'd like to do is to give our appreciation to the Board of Education on Board Appreciation Night. It is a thankless task that is full of headaches and responsibilities that are beyond the scope of what a lot of people know about. And while it's, you know, I don't know, we have a very good relationship here, and that is something that we in the ATH treasure, and we hope that you understand that we do appreciate all that you do for the district. The second thing I would like to do is, just as a request to individual members of the board and to people in the community, that this is our last meeting before the election on November 7th. And in general, as a social studies teacher, I think it's important that we all vote in every election, but particularly in this election, voting no for the Constitutional Convention is something that I think the community should be aware of. I think you've seen a lot of signs and a lot of bumper stickers. To that effect, essentially, this is an opportunity for people to spend a lot of money and not accomplish very much in Albany. The possible outcomes of this are unknown but potentially very dangerous, and so I do urge, on behalf of the ATH and personally, that everybody votes no for the Constitutional Convention. Thank you.
That appears to be everyone. Now, moving on. Appreciation, recognition.
I'd like to open this by stating that I am privileged. I am honored, and I am very fortunate to have had the opportunity, and this doesn't always happen in every school district, to have worked with a group of seven for many years, which has allowed us to get to know each other professionally, to get to know each other personally, and to work in collaboration with each other toward the betterment of every aspect of this school district. And I can honestly say, while we don't always agree on every little item across the table and amongst all of us, I have never, ever had a doubt that anyone at this table had anything but the best interest of the children and the families of the Huntington School District in mind at all times. And to me, and I've heard stories, to me, it's a blessing. It's a blessing to be part of this school district in general, and it's a blessing for me to be able to work with this group of people on a regular basis. And as Mr. Graber mentioned, they are policymakers. They are charged with board governance. I could not do what I do, we could not do what we do, without their support. They really do a job that is underappreciated because they're often behind the scenes, and I'd just like to thank them personally for everything that they have done for this district and for all of us collectively. And on that note, I know that they don't like to be in the spotlight, but I think once a year, they can grin and bear it and accept the thanks that they so justly deserve. I'm gonna ask Mr. Reynolds to step up because we have a little special presentation for them this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Eric Reynolds, Director of Fine and Performing Arts. And to echo James's statement and Mr. Polanski's, I'd like to thank everyone for everything that you have done, not only for our department, but for all of the teachers, faculty, staff, employees of the district, and certainly the students and families. Without further ado, I'd like to, though maybe not as appetizing as the chocolate on the table, we do have some music and art selections for you this evening. So I'd like to introduce Jack Alba, Jake Burton, Emily Geller, Ainsley Proctor, and Luke Rinaldi, directed by Mr. Frank Batista, Finley Music Students, who will be playing "Trumpet Voluntary" by Henry Purcell. Thank you, Frank, and students. Thank you all for giving up a few minutes this evening, and thank you to the parents for bringing them down for a couple minutes. We appreciate that. Next, before I unveil the artwork this evening, and after a few more of these, I think we're gonna need another auditorium space. So maybe we'll have to move to the high school. The Finley Music, the Finley Art Staff and the Art Students, when asked to create something special for the board, they really took it upon themselves and put their all into it, and they created a Zen tangle. And a Zen tangle is known for, it's for Zen. It's based off of the Zen mentality, but also just the life skills that it creates. And one of the big things that it created in this artwork is the students each creating either a section of the picture or taking the lead from somewhere that someone left off and expanding on their idea. And it was a very neat process to witness, and it looks, it's... The title is "Colors Our World," and it's Finley Art and the Board of Education Colors Our World. So I'll unveil it, and I'll just have you take a look. Every art student from Finley Middle School has signed that. We're gonna put a stronger backing to it, and we'll put it on one of these walls as well, but it's a nice memento for the 2017-18 Finley 7th and 8th graders. Their names will live on, and this artwork will soar in color. As I've put in your program, thank you to the Board of Education for providing all of the tools inside the classroom and outside in the community for our students and families to succeed and continue the tradition of excellence here in Huntington. Whether you are supporting our many programs and initiatives, advocating for our students and staff, or being always present at our events, everything that you do is extraordinary and unwavering. On behalf of my department and the faculty and staff of Huntington, thank you for everything that you do.
Thanks, Eric. That's phenomenal. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. And before you leave tonight, if I can just get the names of the student trumpeteers. Thank you. And once again, thank you to the Board of Education for all that they do. They are on here. Thank you. Thank you for that as well. Okay, at this time, just a brief overview. The next item on the agenda has us honoring some very special young people who have achieved at the highest of levels in the National History Day competition. And for those that don't know much about this competition, Huntington is a force to be reckoned with in this competition every year. It starts at the local level within the school district. It then moves on. Local judges then select those who move on to the regional competition at Hofstra University. Those that move on from there end up at competition at the state level, I believe in Cooperstown. And those who progress from there end up in Maryland at the national-level competition. And part of it, we have so many students participating at high levels that inevitably, the past couple of years, certainly since I've been here, we've had students participating at the national level every year. And it's a task for them, because not only have they done all this work to get to this point, but it also typically happens during Regents Week, and all kinds of arrangements have to be made for them to take exams, and this commitment on their part is really unwavering. And I'm gonna stop here, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Levy to step up and give us a little more, and we're gonna introduce these young people very shortly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Polanski. To continue on the theme of thankfulness and representing our gracious feelings towards the Board of Education and you, Mr. Polanski Superintendent, and the administration in supporting this program. This is a program that started in a very nascent form 20 years ago and has been built and grown by dedicated teachers. And I would like to first start by just recognizing those teachers and the work that they do, which is tireless. I have to switch my glasses because now I have to put on reading glasses. Don't turn 50 whatever. It's scary when you start wearing two of them, so you could like see... Oh, they call that bifocals, right? All right. But I digress.
Yes, you do.
So the two students that we are looking forward to recognizing in a few minutes have performed at the highest level in academic research in the discipline of historical study. The program here in the Huntington Union Free School District that is going into its 20th year had been born and grown from Finley Middle School and has been carried on and through at Huntington High School, growing to the point where in these past several years, I think five or more, maybe going back as many as 10 years, we've had upwards of 200 to 300 students participate among the entire student body at Huntington High School. And that happens through the dedication of teachers. In particular, I could identify probably close to half the high school department being involved with this program on a very close level, and I do need to mention their names. First and foremost is Lauren Desiderio, who I'll introduce in a few minutes, who spearheads the program, not just with her students, but the organization of it at every level. Camille Tedeschi, Ken Donovan, Jordan Gould as well. And once in a while, I'll throw a student in if I have somebody who's ready to go. But Ms. Desiderio is going to speak as well to how the full department is involved in guiding students in their research. So among these 300 students, as Mr. Polanski pointed out, the competition gets very fierce. And ultimately, going to Hofstra, we know that Huntington is a force to be reckoned with. But I'll tell you, there's a few other schools that wear T-shirts. They get in there at Hofstra, and they're like, they got their game face on. And I'll tell you, we're soon gonna, well, I don't know about the T-shirts, but... You could ask your dad, right? He could help us get the T-shirts. But the annual theme changes every year. And last year's theme was "Taking a Stand in History." This year's theme is "Conflict and Compromise." So we actually invite all students to participate. It's not just for students in the Honors and AP program. Any student can participate from grade 6 through 12. And I would personally extend myself and be more than willing to help and guide any teacher or student who's looking to do that, because the junior program is 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, and then the so-called senior program is at the high school level. So we've certainly been building this program back again at Finley through the efforts of a teacher in particular, his name is Jared Richter. And he has revived the Yorkers Club, and that program is growing by leaps and bounds. So I would like now to introduce and call up my colleague, Lauren Desiderio. And we have a little prop that we brought with us. And if you get a chance when you're walking through the halls of Huntington High School and you're up in the social studies wing, this is the National History Day Huntington High School local competition, and it recognizes through the year, this is 2015, 2016, and we're soon gonna be putting up the 2017 winners. What year does that go back to, Ms. Dez?
2002.
2002. So there's a student on here. Her name is Laura DeBrowski. And you might recognize her name, Ms. DeBrowski. And it was about the Revolutionary War in Huntington. We're really trying to encourage students to do local history. But little side note on Laura DeBrowski, she's gonna be coming to Finley Middle School on October 23rd, which is very close to Theodore Roosevelt's birthday, which is October 27th. And she is going to be representing Sagamore Hill because this young lady, graduate of Huntington High School, is now a National Park Ranger. And see, these are the types of things that happen when students get passionate about history. We are really looking forward to some of these young students perhaps entering the noble profession of being teachers. So we'll keep our fingers crossed on that one. But I'd like to introduce Ms. Desiderio to say a few words.
Thank you. I just wanted to start by thanking the board for taking the time tonight to recognize... this program and the efforts that myself, my colleagues, but especially the students at Huntington put forth. This program wouldn't be possible without your support, without Mr. Levy's support, Mr. Cusek's support, my colleagues who volunteer their time to judge and mentor students. It's definitely not an easy project to do. I think some of your own children have done it, and they probably described it as painful at times, and who knows what else over the breaks. But one of the things I always stress to the kids, it's really choose a topic that you're passionate about. And, you know, not everyone's going to find the topic that fits what their passion is, but they often begin to love what they do. One of the things that I'm most proud of from this past year is not only the achievements of Aiden and Alyssa, but of fellow competitors, such as our group of students who have been presenting their Ghost Army documentary to veterans group throughout the community. They've made so many connections with vets that they probably never would have done before without doing that project. Even vets are giving them suggestions for this year's theme. For those of you that don't know, one of the projects and exhibit on Thomas Paine, they met with Thomas Paine House this past summer, and their project's now on display. And they had a whole reception for them in August. And then this past, I guess, spring, a local group met with, who's the guy at Huntington? I'm blanking on his name.
The Huntington Historical Society.
With their project on Nathan Hale. And it's those experiences that the kids, it's beyond the classroom. And that's my big takeaway for them of, this is something that, it's unique for them, it's their experience. And I just, I'd love to see our success, you know, come out through those types of activities beyond just what they're learning in the class. So, thank you so much for your support. We're really looking forward to this year's theme of Taking a Stand in History. I'm really happy that Finley has begun to embrace the program again. We've had students, my officers, who I'm so grateful for with all of their support and help, have been down there mentoring already, they're going next week as well. Today, we met again with students in 9th grade that are beginning the project for the first time, so we're really excited. This truly is probably one of the most difficult projects they'll do in regards to research and evaluating sources. They start in September, and for Aiden and Alyssa, in their case, they worked on this project for 10 months before they presented in June. So I'm so, so proud of all they've accomplished. They have been working with NHD for three years. I wish I could get them to do it again as seniors, probably doubtful, maybe, no? But, you know, I want them to speak a little bit about their experience, but it was so nice to be able to go down there and watch them present their projects, to get their feedback. Poor Aiden was sick, taking the Regents, and then having to go present his paper, which he was like, "But Ms. Dez, it was three women." I'm like, "Aiden, I'm a woman. I know you did Larry Flynt, but it's okay. They're going to love your paper." And the fact that Aiden is our first top-three national place winner is phenomenal. Alyssa's documentary was one of the best documentaries I saw. She got a standing ovation. Students from other states came up to her afterwards. It was just such a wonderful experience to go and to see firsthand and their excitement in presenting. So, I'm really, really proud of them. So thank you so much. Coming up, guys.
So thank you for coming up, Alyssa and Aiden. If it's okay, you could give us just a briefing on your paper. And we do have an opportunity, thank you for inviting Alyssa to present her documentary. I think you will find it very intriguing. So, Aiden, you want to go first?
Thank you for taking the time to honor me tonight. Where do I start? Well, I certainly enjoyed writing about Larry Flynt and researching him. It was definitely a controversial topic. So controversial, in fact, I didn't think I'd make it nearly as far as I did in the competition. But, I did. It was a great experience to have. I was nervous when I walked into national competition and saw three women as judges. I didn't, I didn't think it would go over well with them, especially because they were all very liberal. They made that abundantly clear early on. But, I would love to do NHD again senior year, but unfortunately, I have plans to celebrate the holidays over Christmas later. On a more serious note, I would like to thank Mr. Donovan and Ms. Dez for their help, especially Ms. Dez has been helping me since I was a freshman. And it has been a great experience. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alyssa. Thank you very much again for your time tonight and your recognition, I appreciate it. I had a great time all three years doing NHD, but this year was really special, having my work recognized at all different levels. During the week of Nationals, I got to present my documentary at the National Museum of African-American History in Washington DC, which was great. It was an amazing experience. I got to meet with kids from all different states and even different countries, talk about their own research and what topics interested them in their own process. Making documentaries through NHD has definitely sparked a new interest for me, which I never would have picked up on despite, I mean, you know, if I hadn't done this program, and it's definitely something I want to continue to do in college, do topics about social activism. So this has been a great opportunity to expose myself to new kind of fields and projects, and it's definitely prepared me for further research opportunities in the future. So, thank you again.
So, we are going to ask, oh, well, neither do I.
Yes, Alyssa, do you want to check this area there?
By the way, you prefer an entire generation of our American children.
Yet there is a growing concern about homosexuality in society.
We know that one person is preferred. It is practically impossible for that person to adjust to normal attitude in regard to sex.
Americans consider homosexuality more harmful to society than adultery, abortion, or prostitution.
They glorify unnatural sex acts. They show youngsters that it's wrong, it's gross, it provides kicks to be a homosexual as they do with every other kind of beast.
By the mid-20th century, a wave of intense homophobia built the minds of the American people. Beginning in the 1940s, the lavender scare marked persecution of gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender citizens. Paralleling the anti-communist campaign of the Second Red Scare during the beginning of the Cold War, gays were targeted. After being deemed untrustworthy and a threat to traditional American values, government action initiated a witch hunt against homosexual workers in the government. This plan was headed by President Floyd Eisenhower. Eisenhower signed an executive order in 1953 that cleared any individual who participated in immoral or notoriously disgraceful conduct, such as sexual perversion, was considered a national security risk and therefore was prohibited from holding a government job. Gays were also prohibited from joining the armed forces. These policies resulted in protests that mirrored the civil disobedience methodology of the coinciding civil rights movement. Because of the peaceful nature of the efforts, media coverage was scarce and no major changes were made. In the early 1950s, the American Psychiatric Association officially deemed homosexuality a mental illness. The slavey branded all gay people as clowns. Public service announcements warned citizens not to associate with homosexuals because they believed that being gay was contagious.
What Jimmy didn't know was that Ralph was sick. A sickness that was not visible like smallpox, but no less dangerous and contagious, a sickness of the mind. You see, Ralph was a homosexual, a person who demands an intimate relationship with members of their own sex.
Anti-gay attitudes were also apparent in police forces across the nation. Police officers often acted as spokespeople for anti-gay advocacy.
And if we catch you in battle with a homosexual, your parents are going to know about it first. And you will be caught. Don't think you won't be caught. Because this is one thing you can act in, lady. This is one thing that if you don't get caught by us, you'll be caught by yourself. And the rest of your life will be a living hell. They can be anywhere. They can be judges, lawyers. We ought to know if arrested or not.
The anti-gay agenda of the federal government trickled down to lower government branches. During New York City Mayor Robert Wagner's three terms, he established policies that targeted the gay community. Wagner attempted to clean up the city for the upcoming 1964 World Fair. He worked in part with the New York State Liquor Authority and made it illegal for any establishment where gay people congregated to obtain a liquor license. Any places that violated this law were subject to raids by the police.
The New York State Liquor Authority had a rule that one non-homosexual with an license premise made the posters on the raid. So nobody was ever supposed to be able to eat any coppers that were sprayed with the coffee and they closed it. And this Halloween event into the gay bar business.
During the 60s, most of the New York City's gay bars were owned by the mafia. Many of these establishments were located in Greenwich Village. According to writer Toby Marado, Greenwich Village had been known as a Vulcanian enclave whose residents included prominent homosexual artists and intellectuals. By 1969, so many of the district's residents and visitors were gay, and so many of its commercial establishments gay-oriented, that the village effectively functioned as a gay ghetto. One of the most popular gay bars in the area was the Stonewall Inn. In 1966, Tony Lauro, a member of the Genoese Pride family, purchased the bar near Peter R. Christopher Street in the Village. To operate under the strict laws of the New York Liquor Authority, the Stonewall Inn used the facade of being a private bottle club. Unlike public bars, private clubs weren't required to have liquor licenses and were not as easily entered into by the police. In order to remain open, Lauro had paid $1,200 a month to the six police precinct so that they would be tipped off to any upcoming raids. Stonewall soon became a tight-knit community. For many, the bar was a refuge from the oppressive environment that had been built around them.
It was old, it's got the old lobby added, that's on, and that's probably true for most of the ones who went there.
However, raids still occurred regularly. The owner was always alerted by the police as to when they would happen, usually during the bar's earlier hours. Arrests could be made for something as minor as sitting too close to someone. All visitors were required to show ID to the cops.
They raided the Stonewall, at least four times while I was there. Then you were taken away, your name was covered as a missing, and then you lost your job. Then you often lost your family.
Yes, almost always complied with police requests out of fear that they may be arrested or publicly outed. But in the early hours of June 27, 1969, around 1:20 AM, an unannounced police raid on the Stonewall involved in the arrest of 13 people inside the bar by unexpected resistance from a crowd gather. What stirred up commotion between the six police officers on the scene and the quickly growing crowd all of a sudden escalated. Sylvia Rivera, a 17-year-old transgender woman, reportedly flew the first bottle of the cops while yelling, "It's a revelation." Crowd exploded into chaos. They tried to overturn the police's lack of sight. Pennies, beer bottles, and then bricks were thrown. The police were then outnumbered by about 600 people. Ten police officers barricaded themselves inside of the bar while waiting for reinforcements. People in the street began to throw garbage cans, bottles, rocks, and bricks at the building, breaking the windows. Witnesses report that a parking unit was torn out of the ground and used as a batter room on the doors of the Stonewall. The tactical police force of the NYPD arrived and detained as many people as they could, putting them in patrol rackets to go to jail. By 4 AM, the streets had been cleared. Countless protesters and four police officers had sustained injuries. Practically everything in the Stonewall Inn had been destroyed. The next day, members of the community spread the word about the riots. That night, more protesting took place on Christopher Street. On the second night, thousands of rioters gathered.
The tactical patrol force on the second night, taking large numbers, were much more brutal. There were occasions where we did see people getting out of stairs.
Thursday night, bodies laid on the subway line. People bleeding, they did. They started a must-encantation series in front of the Stonewall.
The uprising lasted until July 3, 1969. After several nights of explosive street battles between protesters and the police, it was a consciousness of Stonewall as a turning point in the gay rights movement.
The effect of the Stonewall riot was to change the direction of gay movement. We're going to propose something that all groups could participate in. What we ended up producing was what's now known as the Gay Pride March.
The first gay pride parade in 1970 was not a parade at all, but a protest on Christopher Street marking the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising. To this day, an annual pride parade takes place in Greenwich Village to commemorate those who fought for their rights. Parades now take place across the nation as a celebratory mark of the LGBT culture. Stonewall was a catalyst for the formation of gay rights organizations. Within months of the riots, the Gay Ovation Fund was created. Members took a stand for their rights through organized marches that protested for social and political reform. The riots set the stage for leaders such as Harvey Milk, a militant activist in San Francisco during the 70s, a strong political force. He eventually won a seat on the city floor, becoming one of the nation's first openly gay people to hold office. In the 1980s, the outtake of the Chinese AIDS led to the stigmatization of gay citizens. The negligence of the Reagan administration to address the epidemic caused mass demonstrations from the LGBT community across the nation.
Our nation was founded on a bedrock principle. We are all created equal. This morning, the Supreme Court recognized that the Constitution guarantees marriage at law. All people should be treated equal, regardless of who they are or who they love. And love is love, is love, is love, is love, is love, is love, cannot be killed or slept aside. So this week, I'm designating this Stonewall National Monument as the newest division to America's national parks system. Stonewall will be our first national monument to tell the story of the struggle for LGBT rights.
When things get hard, just fight. Fight. Have it your way. That's another thing Stonewall told me.
That was very impressive.
Should give you a sense of the volume of work that has to go into producing an effort like this. I have been looking at the products of National History Day work for many years. I don't, that documentary was absolutely outstanding, Alyssa, congratulations.
Extraordinary, really. I hope as many people see it as possible. It was really phenomenal.
And Aiden to take third place at the national level, and we are talking about the national level here, the work that goes into a product like that. Third place nationally, I think speaks for itself. Congratulations to you as well. We just ask both of you to come up for a little token from us in honor of the efforts that you put in here.
Not our chocolate. Not our chocolate. Can't have our chocolate. Get up, Mr. Polanski. Get in there. It's cold in here.
Okay.
Okay, and the next item on the agenda also has us honoring some very special accomplishments. For those that don't know about the National Merit Scholarship Program, two things happened here. The, well, one thing with two purposes. The Preliminary Scholastic Aptitude Test is used for a number of purposes. Obviously, most students take the test, they just took it in Huntington last weekend, to prepare themselves for the rigors of the Scholastic Aptitude Test, which is a college entrance exam. The PSAT is also used as the National Merit Scholarship qualifying test or exam. What this program does is it recognizes students from across the country for their performance at various levels. And each state has its own cut points in terms of who's recognized and who's not, because each state does not contribute equally to the level of the competition. New York is typically a very high cut score because students in New York tend to outscore some students from around the country. We're proud to be the home of two students who have done a very nice job on the National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. To reach either commended level or semifinalist status, you've got to achieve in the top 2% to 4% of the country on the exam, and it's no small feat. And I'd like to take this moment to recognize two students. Levi Leach, I see him. Come on up, Levi. Terrific student involved in a lot of things in the high school community. Levi has earned commended status. And I'd also like to invite back up for earning semifinalist status, Mr. Aiden Forbes.
Next up is our external.
No, no, she actually, we had our audit meeting last week.
Over the external audit report.
Okay, what I'm asking the board for this evening, and this follows a meeting on, well, it was last week, the Audit Committee met to review with the assistance of Jill Sanders, the lead auditor from Colin and Danowski. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you being here. Congratulations again.
I'm so happy for them.
Terrific.
You don't have to stay.
So the Audit Committee met last week, and they had a chance to review the outcome of the report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2017. It was a, it's actually a glowing report. The Audit Committee had a chance to review it at great length. And what I'm asking the board for this evening is their acceptance of the report. And once that happens, we then submit it to the state comptroller. A couple of highlights, and Mrs. Acker can add to this if she likes, most significantly, one of the things that the state comptroller has asked us to look at very carefully is the reserve balances. We have a very formal reserve plan in place that the board adopts, and while we are underfunded in many places, we are certainly in a place that we can afford to, at this point, address some of the more significant unfunded mandates that are thrust upon us every year. But this year, as often requested by the comptroller, our reserve balances, we use more than we put back. And that's one of the things that every district is being, is being looked at very carefully for. The other thing that we've done is we've reduced the amount of fund balance appropriated, and that's another request from the state comptroller's office on just about every audit on financial condition that has been issued, and that was accomplished here as well. So with that said, if there's certainly any questions on it before, Mrs. Acker, if you wanted to add.
Good.
Good?
Yeah, I would require a motion to accept.
Can I get a motion to approve then, the audit report for 2016-17? Jen and Barry, anybody have any questions? All in favor? That is everyone.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Nicely done.
Nicely done.
And on to the superintendent's action plan for 2017-18.
Won't spend much time on this. This is not something that needs to be board adopted, but this typically, I will finish this upon adoption of the board's goals. I've attached this just, A, so anybody who's interested knows it's out there and can take a look at it. And I'd also like to request that the board members, trustees, take a look at this as well. If there's anything that they see that they'd like me to adjust. Certainly, it is a living and breathing document. I will point out that although I have the same number of goals that are listed on the board agenda, they're not aligned completely. Some are combined, some are separated out a little bit, but I think you'll see that I caught the essence of the 2017-18 board goals. And like I said, if there's any objective or action item that you see that you might believe is in need of adjustment, please do not hesitate. It doesn't have to be tonight. It could certainly be moving forward, but this is a chance for you to take a look and give me some feedback.
I liked that you laid it out. It was really well organized, and I liked that it mirrored our goals so that I could, you know, here's our goals and here is actual actions that have to do with it. It was good.
And based on the changing of the goals this year, I guess probably more significant than in past years, there are a number of concrete changes to the plan. So please, please take a look at your convenience.
Jim, is it typical, like, do your colleagues in other school districts also present their boards of education with action plans, or is this something that you do because you do it?
I do it because it helps me. It helps to keep me focused on what I believe we should be focusing on. Every district does it a little bit differently. I mean, technically, there should be something in place that you can use to evaluate me upon, based on established goals. I don't know how often this is done in other districts. I know a lot of superintendents will put together, when they first join a district, their 100-day plan or their first year entry plan. I can't tell you how many go forward in doing this specifically. I'm sure a number of them do.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Just thank you for putting this together.
Yeah, thank you for reviewing it.
Okay, moving on to curriculum and instruction, and Ms. McCoy.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve CSC/CPSC submissions as delineated.
So everyone received that? If I could get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Barry, and a second?
I'll second it.
Emily, all in favor? That's everyone. Moving on to personnel.
I'm asking for the board to approve personnel items on schedules 3, 5, 8, 13, 15, 16, 17, 20, and 22.
So everyone's received that? If I could get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Jen, and a second?
Second.
Barry, anybody have any questions? No? All in favor? That's everyone. Okay, moving on to personnel.
I'm asking for the board to approve personnel items on schedules 3, 5, 8, 13, 15, 16, 17, 20, and 22.
So everyone's received that? If I could get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Jen, and a second?
Second.
Barry, anybody have any questions? No? All in favor? That's everyone. Okay, moving on to business, and Ms. Acker.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items I through O on this evening's business agenda.
So everyone just received that? Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Jen, and a second?
Second.
Barry, anybody have any questions? No? All in favor? That's everyone. Okay, moving on to business, and Ms. Acker.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items I through O on this evening's business agenda.
So everyone just received that? Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Xavier, second by Jen. Anybody have any questions? No? All in favor? That is everyone. Okay.
Want me to announce the donations? Okay, we just accepted two donations to the school district. The first was from the Cinema Arts Center. They presented us with a donation of six copies of The Adventures of Honey and Leon, and the donation is worth an approximate value of $80, and we thank them very much.
And those books have been distributed to the elementary school principals, signed copies.
Oh, that's the signed copies. Okay, that makes sense, actually. That's lovely. And then we had one more from the Huntington Booster Club, who is always very generous. And this time, they presented us with a donation of $1,500 to purchase a scoreboard panel for the gym at Huntington High School. And we'd like to thank the Booster Club very much for their continued support. Thank you, Booster Club. And thank you. I know it'll get a lot of good use. It's a good one.
Okay, that takes us to our second public commentary of the evening. Sam, who applies first? Okay, does anybody have any closing comments?
I think...
Oh, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Fred Amato, 250 Spring Road, Huntington I reside at. I have two boys that go to the Huntington High School. I thank you for your time. I just wanted to bring up to the board some issues that I had with the Huntington basketball, varsity. And I know that I have spoken to the principal, athletic director, and I can't use his name. Okay, the chain of commands. And I was under the impression that things were going to be changed, or changes were happening, and I feel that I haven't seen anything happening, you know, any substantial changes. And, you know, I brought up some pretty strong allegations. And I'd really like to have my chance to tell the board my side of the story and have the board really investigate all the issues at hand that I feel that are there. And I don't really know the rules and the procedures and the guidelines and how to go about that. I don't really know how to speak up here to address that with you, because I don't know what I can say and what I can't say. I know I can't use names in situations. And I just feel that the program has been deteriorating for a few years now, and it seems like in a spiral going downward. Definitely going to affect my boys, going to affect a lot of other children, up and coming kids. It's definitely affected kids from the past that I've spoken with. And the more and more I look into it, the more and more disappointed I get. And I'm really, I'm begging you to make a substantial change here. I really am. And I'm hoping that you look into this, take it very serious, and do the right thing for the majority of the many instead of the few. I feel that there's a personal relationship here that skews things. And I think that the school district and the kids deserve a big change. And I really don't know what else to really say or how to say it. I mean, I have a ton in paperwork that I would love you to read and hear it out, but I don't really know the procedures here.
Mr. Mile, I'll make a suggestion, and I will tell you, as we have discussed, everything you have shared with me, I have shared with the board, but I will suggest, primarily because personnel matters can't be discussed here, anything that you have in writing that you'd like to share with the board, you can send to the district clerk in my office, and I will make sure that they get it.
Okay, very well. I'll send it tomorrow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
My name is Brett Angstat. I reside at 24 Meadow Court, Huntington Station, New York. Similar to what the gentleman just spoke about before, I'm sure everybody that's in this room understands what bullying is. I'm also sure that if you've seen and you watched on the recent news about a young girl named Ally Wakefield, who was out, a cheerleader who was out in Denver East High School, there was an incident that was broadcast that got leaked to the media. There was a whole investigation of a claim that was brought to the school's attention for two months, and it went on death, death of the earth. No one did anything about it. My son last year was graduated from Huntington High School. I had filed two DASSA complaints.
You can't bring that up, sir.
Okay. So similar to the gentleman before, I really think that if this is, the minutes are being recorded, I want to make sure that my name, Brett Angstat, is speaking on behalf of the kids that might be bullied, or kids that may not be comfortable enough to come forward to speak clearly about this particular coach that I understand is going to be rehired. And I want it on record so that if something comes up where something dangerous happens, because, again, I know I'm not allowed to go into specifics, I want it to be on record that I was the person that brought it to this board meeting to make sure that people... So everyone that's up here that's a parent, and I was told by certain people, as a parent, I understand how you feel, where you're coming from. Do you honestly, quote unquote, do you honestly think nothing is going to be done? I can honestly look at you all and say, no, I don't think anything's going to be done. And I don't think that's fair. So for people that don't come out, that don't know this format, and come and have this opportunity when we went the route, we went through the school, we went through the chain of command, and we were told to provide stuff, which we did, and it wasn't done, that's a shame. That's a real darn shame. So everyone has access to the internet, everybody has access to media, everybody knows people, right? Everybody, you know, is that expression? It would be a shame that if some stuff got sent to some of the local press of things that actually have happened and nothing was done. I really, really would ask the same thing that the gentleman just said before, that the board looks at this, because I think it's an extremely serious, serious matter. You know, you talk about the gangs, you know, having state troopers looking out at the school.
Sir, I'm sorry, that's your three minutes.
And I'll make the same suggestion to you, Mr. Angstat. If you have something you'd like to share from you specifically related to your child, share it with the board, not speak on behalf of others.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no one else? Any closing comments by anyone?
Just that we don't have another board meeting before Election Day, so I'll take you back on James or am I there, baby?
Excellent.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn now?
Motion.
Okay, I'm going to go, Barry, Jen, everybody in favor?
Xavier says happy on St. Halloween.
Yes.
Yes, happy St. Halloween. And I love our new electric sign. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for the apples. This was very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for our candy.